I'd like to call the order of the March 7th, 2019 Town of Bowling Green Town Council Meeting. Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge of the witness to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A little bit of housekeeping for our council members. Jeff has advised us that if we stay about...
Six inches.
Six inches away from the mic, it'll help control the volume a little bit better and he won't be chasing it up and down. Also, this is a new setup for us tonight. Usually, we're further away from the public. We're hoping this will give us a chance to be better heard and seen and we can actually... We're all facing each other left right now. So, we're gonna try this out for a couple of months. We may have to extend the table, it's a little bit tight. Just bear with us on that part. And we have a couple... We have to amend the agenda to add a couple items under "new business." Okay, so the first order of business would be the authority to advertise for the Courthouse Lane revitalization project. The second addition would be a resolution for the town to join the Main Street program as an affiliate member. And the third item would be authorization for the town manager to apply for a $7,000 grant through the Department of Housing and Community Development. That's actually due on March 22nd. So, is there a motion to add those items under "new business" to the agenda?
On the motion that we add those items to the agenda, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. McDermott and a second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, eyes ahead. Next item on our agenda is our delegations. The first delegation this evening, we have VDOT here to talk to us about our paving project and any other issues in town.
Good evening, thank you for having me. My name's Lynn Keenan and I'm the new residency administrator for the Fredericksburg Residency of VDOT. So, we wanted to come speak to you today to tell you more about some paving projects that we have going on in the town and just what you might expect and the timeline for each of those. Can I move this, is that... I feel like it's kind of attacking. So, my name's Lynn Keenan, I've been with VDOT for about four months and I brought my esteemed colleague David Beal, who has been with VDOT for longer than that, in case you have any very technical questions. I will defer to him freely. So, just to go over... Maybe I have to use a clicker? I'm failing already.
It's necessary that I can manually...
So, we're gonna talk about the Cape Seal treatment that we plan on doing to the roads this year. So, just to keep going. I'll try to... This is written by our pavement engineer for the district, so it's somewhat technical. I'm gonna try to do it at the layman's level, just so that we don't go into as much detail. I know your time is very valuable. So, we'll go to the next one and I'll just kind of explain what we're looking to do. So, this is... If you look at the graphic here, it's discussing what Cape Seal is. So, it... I'm sorry, I have a... So, what we're looking to do is to treat the roads in a process through which you would have a chip seal, which are those rock-like things, we call them aggregate, and then you put a slurry on top. What I'm passing around is an example of the thickness and the look of what the road would be at the end. So, we're looking to do about a quarter inch addition to the road. And so, that would be the chip seal, as you see, and then the slurry on top. So, what this is doing, it's giving the roads a uniform structure and look and it's adding just a little bit more, a smoother surface and some structure underneath the existing roadway. So, this isn't a new technology, it's been around since the 1950s and it's a way that we can start to add some structure to the roads and make them look a little bit nicer or refresh them some. But it's significantly cheaper, it's really ideal for roads that have lower traffic volumes. And it's something that adds some durability as well as a smooth seal. So, it doesn't let water get underneath, it protects the road and the underlying structure. Here are some examples within the Fredericksburg district that we've used this system. We've tried to stagger in every two years so that our pavement engineers can look at how they're performing over time. We're seeing that they're holding up really well and that the roads themselves are keeping their structure and they're smoothing out quite a bit. So, as of 2019, this year, we're going to start applying those in more areas throughout the district. So, this is kind of our first test, these three years that we've sampled that. And since they're performing well, we're gonna start using this more frequently. So, if you can see on this graphic, I know it's a little tricky, the colors, the purple lines are where we're actually applying the Cape Seal process and the red lines, which are down Broadus Avenue, will be actually with pavement. So, we call that plant mix. So, that's the actual asphalt that you see on the typical road, those will be milled out and then resurfaced and rolled. These purple lines are gonna be the ones on kind of your low-volume secondaries or neighborhood-type streets that aren't having as high of a traffic volume. That'll really do well with the Cape... Sorry, the Cape Seal process. Additionally, we're doing these two longer roads, so Jericho Road and Sparta Road in Caroline County. They're quite expensive in length. The benefit to Cape Seal for us is it ends up being about $110,000 a lane mile, whereas plant mix is close to $300,000 a lane mile. So, our budget for VDOT goes significantly further. If we can do, you know, not milling out entirely, we will, as I'll go into later, we'll fix some of those base failures in some of the areas that need help to build that structure. But we don't actually mill the entire road and we don't have to put as much labor into it. So, it extends the life cycle of the roads without being an extensive cost. So, these are going through kind of the steps that you're gonna see. The first, we'll send out mailings to everybody. So, we'll put out a public notice. We're gonna... We've pulled a lot of the addresses to make sure that we can send them to everybody affected. You'll be getting these mailings that are coming soon and then we'll also put up these no parking signs 96 hours before. So, that'll be letting everybody know, this is coming right now. We have a lot of coordination that we have to do between the utility projects. We're doing some sidewalk repairs. We have the hot, the plant mix going down and the Cape Seal. So, we have a lot of people who are gonna be in and around the town and we're just really trying to make sure that all of those times are staggered correctly so that we can do what we need to do and not be all on top of each other. Obviously, making sure that your utility work is done first is our first priority. And so, that's why we can't give you a firm date right now as to when we're going to for sure be coming in because we want to make sure that the ground underneath that is at the best, that all that utility work is done before we come in and start trying to fix up those roads. So, the next step will be street preparation. So, we're gonna come in and actually cut out patches of areas where they have base failures. So, if you see large depressions in the road, is that the ground underneath and the base of that pavement is crumbling away. So, we need to build that back up, patch those, fill them in. We'll do that first, we'll do extensive sweeping and cleaning operations just to make sure that the ground and the roads are ready to accept that. I should note that everywhere where we're doing Cape Seal is already surface-treated, so they're already in a similar manner. This is a little bit... With the Cape Seal, it's a little bit nicer than what you have now on those arterials, the secondaries as we call them. So, you'll have a really similar wear to what you have now. It'll just have, as you see, a bit of a nicer finish on the end. So, that's step two. Alright, so step three, if you start on your top left, we're gonna lay down liquid asphalt. So, that comes down on a machine. We're doing this one lane at a time, so it won't ever be that we're doing both lanes simultaneously. So, they'll lay down this liquid asphalt and then they'll come back behind that, if you go down right from there. That's where we're actually dropping that aggregate, so small rocks, which I'm sure every engineer in the room will be cringing as I say that. For land history, we're basically gonna put a lot of tiny rocks down and then we'll come back over that with a roller. So, those rocks are actually gonna get embedded into that liquid asphalt. They kind of form like asphalt as you go. And then, we're gonna come back on top with manufactured sand and we call that the block coat. So, this is basically, you're putting down asphalt, you're putting aggregate on top and then we cover it with a manufactured sand. It's gonna be gray in color. We're very clear, we're not using like beach sand, it'll be a gray coat. We call it the block coat and that'll sit on top and really protect that structure and bond it. And then, where we really want to be clear is it's gonna sit for two weeks. So, it needs to cure. And so, we're gonna pack everybody up and they're all gonna leave and it's all gonna sit for two to three weeks. And then, we're gonna come back. So, we don't want everyone to think, this is why VDOT came and this is all we're getting out of it. But it needs to cure and it needs to harden. So, during that time, if you see, on the left side, that's what the chip seal looks like. And then, once you add the block coat, it gets a little bit darker gray. And that'll sit like that for, like I said, two to three weeks. And then, if you go to the next one. Then, we'll come back and put the slurry seal, which is the final touch, on top of that. Before they do that, they're gonna come back and sweep it again, gather up any loose stone if we have any and then they'll cover it, one lane at a time, with this seal. It's gonna go down a little bit brown, but as you drive over it, you kind of say it's like kneading. The more you drive into it, it's gonna grind that in more and it'll become black and appearance. So, this actually, the sample that I have here is really what it's gonna look like at the end. So, the more you drive on it, the more it's gonna smooth out. So, it might ride a little rough at the beginning, they follow behind that slurry seal with an attachment on the back and so, it'll give it a little bit of a ridge. But as that breaks down and wears in, it'll smooth out as you go. So, here are some examples, you can see completed projects. These are from... Slurry Seal is our contractor's website. This is a neighborhood down in Richmond. For all intents and purposes, it looks a lot like asphalt. And I think for the general public who are driving these, they really won't notice that much of a difference. For us, it performs very well. You have the underlying structure to support that. The next slide shows on a primary route. So, we striped this. It's not a very high volume, so it doesn't get the same distress as like 301 or 207 or some of your higher speeds. Unless, this is down in Matthews County, this is Route 14. So, if there's other areas where people wanna drive and get more of an example of what they're like, why did we pick it for this area? So, it's really ideal for neighborhoods, low-volume primary routes. It provides a smooth surface, it adds that structure that you need and it also seals it in, so you don't get water underneath the road, you keep the structure and you're good. Basically, in our attempts to be able to provide something to the Town of Bowling Green in a timely manner, we thought that Cape Seal was the best bet. If we had to do plant mix across the entire district, we just... It's so expensive lane mile for lane mile that we just have a really hard time getting to everywhere we need to go. So, our intent with this is to refresh your roads, to replace any of the base failures and to give you a product that'll wear well. This adds, extends the life of the roads and it also allows us to rehab and reconstruct them as we go. And then, here is my contact information, if anybody has any further questions. I have cards if anybody ever wants to put in a work request. About 840 roads goes to the VDOT customer service line. So, if at any time anybody has a complaint that they'd like to let VDOT know about, every citizen is always welcome to call this number or go on our website and let us know. We only have so many crews, we only have so many people who have eyes on the road. I know you guys drive a lot of the time. It is really through hearing from you that we learn where all of these things are because we just don't have enough staff to be on the roads all the time. So, that is just a quick down and dirty on Cape Seal. You guys have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. I just wanted to let you know kind of what you can expect. The big takeaways are, after that manufactured sand goes down, we're gonna come back. It just takes a couple of weeks. So, we don't want... We're trying to put that out and be really clear with the public because we don't want them to have, you know, their hearts broken that we're not gonna come in and deliver them a quality product. So, we're just gonna get out early and make that clear and make sure that we explain it to you thoroughly. I know that can kind of be dull, asphalt is not everybody's most exciting topic. I'll take any questions if you have them.
Well, I have a question. Are all the secondary roads gonna be covered with Cape Seal?
The ones that we showed on that map, Will, so it's a large number of the roads.
So, how do you determine which one, which were gonna be?
That was... I worked with Sean back... We actually got presented this last fall before Sean left us. Hank, myself and David sat down and that's when they broke me the news that we weren't getting all mill and paved back. So, we kind of made the determination that we would hit the main areas of the high-traffic area. And then, we brought it to council and we reviewed it then also.
I saw that the map layout, can you go back to that map layout, sir also?
Sure.
Of the primary secondary.
Which slide were you interested in, Glenn?
The one, so, street layouts. Primary secondary, probably six files.
So, basically, Broadus, Main, Milford, Chester. I think Chase, because it's an extension of Milford.
That's the primaries, but the secondary roads are, the purple roads up there, correct? So, it looks like you've hit most of the secondary roads in town.
It should be all of town, as was Sean promised us a while ago.
Okay, that's why I was asking the question, to make sure that if you're gonna do the secondaries, that all of them got, because they all need it really badly.
Yeah, and I know there's some spots in Bowling Green Meadows that have some severance that I know you said you would take care of before.
The initial intent was to repave the entire town, but we just didn't have the budget.
I understand.
We broke out all the low-volume roads with Cape Seal and then we're doing mill and fill, you know, grind up the asphalt, put down new asphalt on the higher-volume roads.
So, what's the life expectancy of the cap seal?
The Cape Seal?
The Cape Seal.
It's entirely dependent on traffic volume. If you were to press me, I'd say seven years, seven to 10 years. But there's no reason why it can't last longer than a low-volume severance. I think if you look at, Lynn mentioned we paved Sparta... We're doing Sparta Road. And if any of you traveled Sparta Road, we repaved that probably... I've been at VDOT a little over seven years. It's probably about five years ago, I should hear, we went in there, milled it up and paved it. And now, we're going back, this is preventive maintenance. We're going back to restore that surface, try to stay ahead of it. It's about 20% cheaper or a 20th, a fifth of the cost to mill and fill as it is just to do the Cape Seal. So, it's preventive, it's a preventive maintenance, we're trying to stay ahead so we don't have to go back and wipe that big bullet and repaint it.
Right, I understand, okay, thank you.
But yeah, it should be the whole town.
The whole town should receive some type of treatment.
Yes, okay.
How far will that extend onto the shoulder at all?
So, it'll just go straight up to where the pavement ends now. So, it'll go to edge of pavement where there are sidewalks, it'll saturate right up to the sidewalk and the curb and gutter.
Will we do anything with the shoulder? Once the road is moved.
As far as pulling it back?
Yeah.
As we go through and prepare them, our goal is to clean up those shoulders, pull them back where we see that that work needs to be done.
Is this similar to what we're doing on Route 2? Where'd you go on Route 2?
There was a similar treatment. This is, Route 2 is a latex and this is two steps. So, this is a little bit... This is a catalog.
What is the material actually, Cape Seal material?
It's liquid asphalt.
It is liquid asphalt, it's just a different process?
Right.
Okay.
Oh, Lynn, I think one of the things that John Ray was talking about, are you talking about Mari Avenue where it's so narrow?
No, on the west end of Mari, there's a lot of erosion to the crown of the street. It's higher than the shoulders, so the water goes like this and kind of just goes on to everyone's property. So, I was just curious if the shoulder was gonna be paved or leveled, graded or something like that to match that.
So, there's some erosion area?
There are areas where you can't even get two cars through there, really. I mean, don't you agree?
Oh, tell me.
So, as part of this, we're not really trench widening or expanding the width of the road. So, basically, we're just putting the structure on top of what's existing. So, it won't be widening that extensively.
But any... Alright, we can get to you and David and look at some of the erosion part, just to get that erosion taken care of.
Yeah, definitely, and VDOT has an aggressive goal that we're working towards to try to get to 20% ditching each year. We're at about 3% right now, so going from 3 to 20 is a big change in our culture and the way that we're doing work.
But it makes sense to do the trenching if you're gonna come in and do the repaving, right?
Well, yeah, absolutely, to go in and prep that beforehand to make sure that the road is functioning. If the geometry itself is actually curving, since we're not milling all of the roads that are getting this treatment, they won't be completely milled to be a flat surface. But in some instances, that geometry is designed so that water doesn't, you know, hold in the middle.
Right, okay.
Can you speak a little bit to the sidewalk repair?
So, the sidewalk repair is scheduled to begin in the May timeframe, but again, we're trying to coordinate that with the utility work that's being done. So, again, it's a lot of steps, but at the end of all this, we're gonna have utility repair work, sidewalks, Cape Seal and plant mix.
And is the sidewalk that you're looking at, is that throughout the whole areas that you're gonna be doing the repair on the roads or just certain?
Just certain sections. So, not all the areas that are getting the Cape Seal, we'll be getting sidewalks.
We need to... We're looking at South Main. Yeah, we did North Main a lot this year.
So, you're just looking at Main Street?
This year, and then...
Yeah, 'cause I live on Mari and it's... There are a lot of areas where there's no sidewalk and I get complaints about them all the time, so I'm just trying to...
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, on the sidewalks, the last time they came through, where there was any driveway or it came up against the intersection, it pitted terribly almost right away. And I've got some photos of that and I don't know what caused that, if it had cured right or if it was just the salt, right, that one or did it? But it might be something that they can do a better job on.
Okay, and we do have a new incidental concrete contract that we're using this year, so it'll be a different, it'll be slightly different from the way that we set it up.
You're familiar with the process last time?
On these roads, that little crack you're having. And this is one of them that's due to be milled down, fresh asphalt. Something needs to be done with the doing all that to get, so that when you go into people's driveways, you don't drag your bumper or your muffler back in your car or it's great for coming out. They're bagging into businesses, Pizza Hut is, they're bagging into houses. We've had VDOT come out a few hours where they put, crush and run a pipe and no neighbor had to come out and put asphalt pipe because it's so bad. It's because it is, it's a high crown that comes in. But something that needs to be addressed, water, and then it's gonna cut it in. You know, I don't know what they can do, but it's very...
They will address that with the contractor, make sure that they're directing property to the road.
Appreciate it.
Hi Lynn, thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure that you're aware that we have Clean Sweep coming up, which is in June, and then the Harvest Festival, and I'm sure you'll coordinate that with your LSA paving schedule. One of the questions I wanted to address was if we could get a crosswalk in front of, say, the bakery over to the Mexican restaurant? Since that restaurant's open, we have an awful lot of pedestrian crossing or something there. I'm just afraid.
We can look at that as something that could be done under permit with the town's support.
I would suggest that maybe like last year or the year before, we had kind of a little planning session where we all got together, town manager, council can give me some of these suggestions. Because I've had some suggestions of another crosswalk called South Main and two, because there was nothing down there, so...
And the coffee shop, that's a hard spot.
So, we can maybe work together.
Parking lines, we have a park and a drive-in, and one park, it messes up two parking spots. And we need to let the parking also visit there as well.
With the crosswalk, we've previously been asked to move the crosswalk from its existing location down to, I think it was where the Family Dollar is, the Dollar...
Right here.
And so, that's, we have a drawing, we're set up to do that. If you wanted it in a different location...
How many can you have?
We need to work out through it because it's...
Because you have the best...
The traffic is picking up in town.
Just so everybody's clear, we're talking about moving the one at the bank down to the Dollar Town.
Let's just get to go see what we can work out and then we can bring it to the council and just kind of get a game plan. But anything y'all want me to bring up, just get it to the town manager, we can help about it. And I'll, we'll get that to our calendar sooner than later, so we can be welcomed. Sorry, sorry. I was a little close that time, I think.
Just another issue that I had, I had another person contact me about in front of the post office and maybe making a no parking spot there. Somebody almost got hit there, coming, just walking out with a pill also. I know we addressed it a couple of weeks ago, it'll be last month, but I have another citizens can contact me about that.
That's a... Yeah, we've asked David to look into that, the chief to look into that. Right now, we have an issue though, because some people don't wanna go and park a lot of post office because there's a sinkhole supposedly. But yeah, we'll get the police sheet just to keep an eye on that area also.
And I've had a lot of people contact me about Mari Avenue and it's just dark and narrow and people walk down it and I don't know if there's anything that we could do, if we could put more lighting down there or speed bumps or make it one-way. Just a lot of cut-through there, it's a lot of traffic.
So, absolutely, those are things that we can all work with staff, with VDOT staff and the town staff. Those are things, we can give you guys examples of traffic calming measures, so you can see kind of the specifics.
Yeah, we've had this discussion every two years, I think, since I've been on council and...
Well, I guess it needs to be done.
Well, the reconstruction of Mari is not gonna happen based off the call it's done. Though, I've been told by VDOT that many times. Looking at other traffic measures, we can talk about it again in this meeting and see if we can come up with a solution.
Certainly worth revisiting.
I think there are ways you can slow, because I live on that road and it is bad, the traffic is, it's the speed. And I feel like if, like that little sign that you have as you come into town, that would be a help. I mean, speed bump, I don't think you have to deter traffic, I think we just have to slow it down and it has to be... So, I think there are ways that we could do that and I'm happy to contribute that I can do.
I think the biggest challenge is what happens on Mari Avenue is people do not want to go to the light on Milford. So, they use Mari Avenue as a cut-through. So, they've already installed 25 mile an hour signs. The last survey of the town, people on the street did not want speed bumps. They put an extra stop sign, people just fly through that, it's just, it's the way it is.
Yeah, they never asked me, I look, it's funny that way, did they ever ask you about the speed bumps?
Oh, yeah.
I have the sign in front of my house, I would do whatever. My neighbors, I've had a lot of complaints from the neighbors, so not gonna mind.
If you stop, there's a no turn on Red Stop. So, that's one that, if you get a right turn on Red, that might...
That's the distance.
Yeah, I'm saying, but it's...
One thing is, we're getting ready to help with the budget, we can see if we can find some more money in the budget to put another speed sign in the budget for Mari Avenue. Because that was kind of the plan originally, was to take care of the Main Street area that's real high and then either any one of those three cut-throughs, Milford, East Broadus or Midwest Broadus or Mari. I have no issues if we put it on Mari, if we can find it in the budget. Yeah.
I'm gonna VDOT install it for us, we'll buy the sign.
Thanks for helping us with that, I appreciate that.
Why did Glenn say there was no turn on Red?
So, it has to do with the intersection, the distance, the viewing distance. I don't know what all the details are about.
Our buildings are right on the corner, so there's no... You would have to pretty much be in the intersection to be able to see to make that right-hand turn.
Well, you kind of have to do that in several places in towns.
Well, let's, we'll get together and get a...
Well, let's, we'll get together and get all these things tidied up and see what we can do on Mari again. Maybe we can at least get some signs up there, and the chief can run some radar out there.
Mr. Mayor, go outside.
Can I speak, Mr. Mayor? So, Lynn, I'm the events coordinator for the town of Bowling Green. Are you the, just to echo what Mrs. Gaines brought up, not in regard to the crosswalk, but with regard to town events, are you the point person for coordination, are you dealing directly with these utility companies?
Our offices.
Your offices.
If you guys have questions, you're always welcome to reach out to me.
It's not so much questions, but again, just to echo what Mrs. Gaines is saying, we have, I know, I know that you said, we're not really sure about schedules right now, we're planning, hopefully starting in May. We do have two major events in Bowling Green in the first week of June. One is the Clean Sweep, which brings a great deal of traffic all around town, all roads are affected. That's a large community yard sale, where we have thirty-plus yard sales in town, so that's, I just wanna make sure. And then we have a wine festival that is primarily going to affect South Main, and mainly South Main. So, I just wanna make sure that, that town events are not forgotten in that coordination process.
Absolutely.
So, if I could be put in touch with the appropriate contact person, I know that Mr. Beal and I have worked together in the past with Harvest Festival and Gaines, but I wanna make sure that there's no conflicts there for folks that are coming to Bowling Green.
Absolutely, and none of the, none of the pavement work will be happening over the weekend. So, if it is that we do the block coat, and then, I mean, it's still able to be traveled upon.
Okay.
The more you do travel on it, the better it is to have seal out there to share that. So, aside from milling on the Main Streets, and definitely we can work with you guys and head calendar and make sure that they're not actively milling in the middle of that.
Thank you.
But those sort of things, definitely, we can help.
Thank you.
I have one more question, if that would be okay. Do they put down temporary striping during that two weeks?
They may not, no. So, this is just on the, on the secondary, so they might be doing, they might be seeing on the Main Street. Well, that's, that, the Main Street will be getting a full pass spot, so that'll be getting regular mix. So, they're actually gonna mill that out and do some of that handwork in the next coming weeks. So, you might see some groups out actually taking up the pavement markings and putting down temporary markings. We have it in the contract, that any time if those markings are coming up where they're hard to see, that we can call them and have them come back up and put those wrapped down. But you might be seeing temporary pavement markings beginning in the next couple of weeks through the continuation of the project.
So, when you do East Broadus and Main, is that, does that have that two-week waiting period where it settles and bonds, or it automatically goes?
So, that'll be, that'll be regular pass spot like you would typically see from a pavement construction.
Thank you, Lynn.
You're welcome.
All right, next. Next on the agenda, we have a representative from the Caroline Family Y M C A.
Hello, my name is Mary Claire, and I am the new executive director, the new executive director of Caroline Family Y M C A.
No.
Is that I am?
Well, first, the plan for the upgrade here, the one compatible element from the old system was the anthill.
So, we can speak louder, yeah.
I can speak louder if you want, I do, okay? So, first of all, I wanna say thank you so much for having us here this evening. I very much appreciate the opportunity, and thank you so much, Glenn, for arranging this for us, to be here to address you this evening. As I said, I'm the new executive director as a Caroline Family Y M C A, I have been there since January first. And we have a number of exciting things that are happening at the Y M C A now, that I'd like to talk to you just a little bit about, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Heather, my aquatics director, because she wants to talk to you specifically about our second grade swim program. So, a couple of things, just so you know, today I learned that our membership has reached its highest point ever at the Caroline Y M C A. We now have one thousand one hundred and sixty membership units, that totals about thirty-eight hundred residents of the county that are now utilizing the Y M C A, so we couldn't be happier about that. A few things I just wanna make sure you're aware of, we are part of a larger association, the Rapid Hens Area Association, which includes the Y M C A in Stafford, in Spotsylvania, and in King George. So, if you do join the Y M C A, your membership is within any of those, in fact, it's a nationwide membership, so you can be there. Here in Caroline, we do do things a little bit differently. We have income-based memberships for Caroline residents, and we also have an open door policy. And what that means is that we'll never turn anyone away from membership at the Y M C A. No matter what the situation is, we're gonna work with folks to make sure that if they want to join, that they're able to. A number of programs that we have for residents to take advantage of. All ninth graders in the county, I don't know if you knew this, receive a free one-year membership from the Y M C A. All first-year teachers receive a free one-year membership from the Y M C A. County employees do get a discount, and we are working to enable payroll deduction of the membership fees to the Y M C A. Another program that we have currently that I'm so proud of is something called Bright Beginnings. Bright Beginnings is a program, it's one of those backpack programs for kids who may need it. But ours is a little bit different than some of the other ones you see, because what we do is we pair an adult with a child, and it all happens on the same day, everyone goes shopping together. And every child will receive, who needs one who applies to the program, will receive a backpack and... It's about a hundred and fifty dollars' worth of school supplies, because we wanna ensure that all children are ready to start school. Last year, we were able to help fifty-five children in the community with that, I'd love to go with this year. So, I am applying for grant funding so that we can increase the number of children that we'll be able to help. We also have a summer learning program that we're looking into expanding as well here in the county. Just yesterday, we met with all of the county principals and talked about, you know, the programs that we offer and what we wanna do moving forward for the county. So, my charge is to ensure that the Y M C A is represented in the county in a big way. One of the other programs that we're about to undertake is something that we're gonna call Activate Caroline. And Activate Caroline is going to be a whole health and community wellness program, with the Y taking the forefront at that. And we're hoping that individuals, businesses, houses of worship, anyone who wants to partner with us will do that to bring awareness to the people in the county about the importance of whole health and fitness, and again, every aspect of that. So, actually, a week from tonight, we are hosting a chamber after hours event at the ranch, where we're gonna be introducing that. So, if you are free and available, I would love to welcome you to the ranch, and if you've never been there, I'll give you a tour of our fabulous facility. Of the four YMCA's, we're the youngest in the association, we're just turning five years this year, so we're very excited about that as well. And so, like I said, we just have so many exciting things going on. Oh, one thing I did forget to mention, we are also working with the school to identify a location over here on the Bowling Green side, where we have a lot of equipment that we're not currently using. And we want to have a site over here in Bowling Green for folks to be able to come to, to workout, and where we can also have group fitness classes. So, we are working on that, and I hope to have that complete by the summertime at the latest, I would say. But again, specifically tonight, we wanted to talk to you about our second grade swim program. So, I'm gonna ask Heather to come on up and talk to you a little bit, and then when she's done, if you have any questions for us, I'd love to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Hello, my name's Heather Hale, and I am a from here, come here. My family was from Caroline County originally, it's before A D Hill came in, and then my father moved out, but then we relocated back here in ninety-six, so I'm probably can't to most of you in some way.
Somewhere.
Yes. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about our second grade learn to swim program, specifically what it is and where it came from, what it was born out of. As you know, as Caroline residents, we have, in this county or surrounding counties, in the past ten years, usually had about at least one to two to three drownings a year. And this is because of the area that we live in. We live near beaches, we live near lakes, we live near ponds, pools, backyard pools, et cetera, quarries, all around us. And while that gives us a vast opportunity for entertainment, for recreation, fishing, swimming, boating, it also increases our risk, and we want to prepare the kids in this county to be able to be around water safely. So, the program that we developed is a second grade learn to swim program. We have all the second graders in the county from Bowling Green, Madison, Lewis and Clark, come to the Y M C A. They get six free lessons, forty-five minutes, and the schools have got a little skin in the game, so to speak, by providing the transportation to and from the Y M C A. This happens during the school day on Fridays. This Friday coming up is gonna be our last one for Madison. We run this program with grant money, donations, volunteers. We staff it with our lifeguards and our instructors, and everybody else that comes in is a volunteer. We have probably a five-to-one ratio of volunteers to staff. So, it is a very big part of what we do, and a very big part of how our volunteers can interact with our kids and through the Y M C A, and what they can do. At the end of the year, we do a volunteer luncheon for them, because it is a lot of work. You know, it's from eleven-thirty to about two-thirty on eighteen Fridays throughout the year. And the funny thing is that each volunteer tells me, you know, this has been absolutely wonderful. These kids come in and they're like, ooh, what are we gonna do, what are we gonna do? And at the end of it, they're running up, they're hugging you, they don't wanna leave, they wanna come back. We try to make sure that we touch on all safety points for the county, specifically things such as boating safety, life jackets, floating, what to do if you fall in or are pushed into a body of water, how to save yourself, those kinds of things. As well as kids who are a little bit more developed with their skills, we work on specific stroke development with them. And, you know, and talk to them about programs that are around the county, you know, swim teams or things at the high school that they have program on, such as their swim team. And it's just a really good program overall. Mr. Regent asked that we come tonight just to explain a little bit about it. We provide also any child that does not have a swimsuit or a towel, we also buy hair bands for girls with the long hair, keep it out of their face when they go into water, and provide those things, plastic bags to take home their wet clothes. And some of the, we just had a board member bring in a big bag of towels, because most of my towels have walked. With the little kids, you know, at the end of the day, they go home, they don't wanna, you know, bring the towels back, and that's fine. You know, we don't do it for that specific reason, we do it because the kids love it, they get so much out of it, and it provides a sense of safety, it provides us with the knowledge that we're doing what we can to teach these kids basic water safety skills. I am done with my spiel, so if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them.
How many kids did you all have through the program last year?
Three hundred and twenty-eight.
That pretty much covered all of the second graders in the county, correct?
Yes, there was one child from Bowling Green who did not come because their parents did not sign the permission form and specifically asked that they didn't. We do also provide for kids with special needs, so this is all kids in second grade. We currently, this session, we have three kids with non-verbal autism who have one-on-one partners in the water with them every single week. And like I said, I could not do that without the volunteers. My bathroom is in special education, and so that's especially the group that I wanna teach. As a matter of fact, you probably saw me come in with wet hair, that's because I'm doing adaptive lessons at the Y M C A, because that is a group that is not necessarily reached, and that is also a group that has significantly more risk when around water.
And again, there's no cost to the families for you all to provide six swimming lessons for the second graders, and the school transports the kids to the Y M C A, correct?
Yes, and the teachers come with them. We've had some teachers get in the water with the kids, 'cause they wanted to interact and to see what they were doing and to help. It's been, it's been so well received that I've talked to the teachers and discussed having a meeting and working on specific S O L correlations for the second grade that they can do at the school in regards to swim and in regards to terminology, vocabulary, you know, their sentences with adjectives that they're learning in second grade. We do math, because our pool is twenty-five yards, so they're adding how many yards they're swimming per week. They chart that, and then they add it up at the end of the week, or at the end of the session to determine how much they swim each week. And then, the other thing that I would say is that the schools have really jumped in on this and have really partnered with us very strongly. J D actually has done very well with coordinating and getting bus drivers. The principals at each school have done a great job, they'll give me their calendar of when their events are, so I can plan around that each, each school year. And if you're wondering how you can donate, bathing suits and towels would be fantastic.
And maybe soap to turn it into, right?
Yes.
And an old washing machine if you got one, that really works.
Right, I actually take the suits and the towels and everything to my house and wash them, 'cause I have a sanitary cycle on the, on the washing machine. I did, I've had volunteers donate laundry detergent, which is fantastic.
Well, I wanna thank you very much. I asked them to come tonight because we don't understand this side of the county very much about how important the Y M C A is. It's a little bit away from us, which is kinda ridiculous, 'cause it's only eight, nine minutes away. But we're sometimes kinda removed from that, but, you know, this is our life, this is not just one side of the county's life, this is the entire county's Y M C A, it's for all of us for the benefit. And I've been involved in the last month or so of talking with them and working with this. They have phenomenal staff, Mary Claire's come on board and doing a great job. They have a lot of programs that we're not aware of, we don't really see those. I mean, they have programs for seniors, they have all kind of educational programs out there. So, I thought it was really important that we got to know the Y a little better from our town's perspective and from the Bowling Green side of the community. So, I wanna thank you both for coming, I really appreciate that, and we're looking forward to working with you, thank you so much. In fact, where's Andrea?
Right here.
Oh, there you are, okay, sorry. It's a new line up. Andrea, I will tell you a little bit about the national second grade program, can you tell a little bit about that?
The Make-A-Slash program through USA Swimming, their goal is to teach every second grader how to swim. I don't know if you've heard of that or not. We have, and we, actually, when I, when I was looking at this program, I went to a couple of different YMCA's to see how they ran their learn to swim. Several of them do what's called SAW, or Safety Around Water programs. Several do second grade programs, several do, you know, middle school programs. We found that, you know, with the younger kids, the second graders, there's a little bit less body awareness issues. They're not as reticent to really get in the water, be around each other, all of that. And they're still at that stage where they will listen and, and follow directions, and there's no, I don't wanna, I don't wanna sound as an educator, but there's not any backlash or any attitude or any of that. And they're, you know, they're, they're just happy to be there, so we found that that's a really good age. And we did start on the Bowling Green side, we gave them our pilot program the first year that we did it, for four weeks. And the reasoning is, I used to teach at Bowling Green Primary, when it was the primary school, and, you know, at that time, we always felt like, well, hey, you know, the other side of the county, and again, it's that whole divided county thing, the other side usually gets what, you know, the good things. So, we wanted to bring that here for Bowling Green first, and, and like I said, that's kinda where my heart is.
Thank you so much for that, we really do appreciate that, anybody have any comments?
I mean, if you're looking for a spot here in Bowling Green to open a satellite, I mean, we can work with the E D A and some of the business groups here in town that may have some properties available, so let us know where we can help out.
The chief had a question?
No, I just wanted to say that one of my children, one of my sons is a benefactor of your program this past year, and not only has it emphasized the, obviously, the water safety aspect of it, 'cause we're big into boating in the summertime, but also he was, he was having problems communicating with others, and apparently, that's when the program brought his communication skills up to par too. So, I just wanted to thank you, would be nice to...
Great, thank you so much, we certainly appreciate it.
Lynn is gonna connect us, but I have some ideas about getting suits, goggles, and towels.
and towels.
Fantastic. Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving along to the public comment section. Just a reminder to come to the podium and state your name and address, and we like to keep those comments to a three-minute timeframe, so. Is there anybody here that would like to just count for on any matter? Okay.
My name is Becky Yielman, I'll sign this after I finish. My name is Becky Yielman, I work with Caroline County Public Schools, and fabulous. We partner with them and everything they bring to our schools for our students is heartfelt, is genuine, and it's not putting it out front, putting it like you're here for our county, for our kids. But anyway, getting on to why I'm here. Each year we hold a four-year dinner. We recognize our teacher of the year, their families, our new teachers of the year, the staff members, and even our retirees. Last year we held it here, and it was a, I've been with the county almost twenty years, it's probably our least beautiful dinner that we held for our faculty and for our staff. And what we're asking for you guys is, again, we're holding our dinner, or we're likely to hold our dinner here again on April eighteenth from five-thirty to eight-thirty, with the expense of the catered meal, the decorations, and the awards. Caroline County, the schools were asking you to consider waiving the fee for the use of the facilities and then there's the rental fees with that. And then, I think last year we paid the, I guess, kind of the custodial cleanup fee, and very understandable, you know, we understand that. But just let us know, we'll be, you know, hopefully, here on the eighteenth, celebrating with our faculty and our staff.
Thank you. Council, we have this on our agenda as item twelve, would we like to address that now or would we like to wait till you do this? It's your pleasure.
Let's do it.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes, I make a motion that we take a vote to waive the fee.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to waive the rental fee of Town Hall for Ms. Howard. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Wright, any further discussion?
The only discussion I've had, I think, Ms. Yielman alluded to the fact that they paid for the cleanup, and if we could go ahead and include that in there, if that would be reasonable, the custodial fee, and Tracy, do you know how much that is?
Two-seventy-five.
Two-seventy-five.
You might say our discounted rate is less than the janitor's fee. So, normally our discounted rate is two-fifty, but though we paid two-seventy-five for janitor's fee, so we'd be better off just getting the discounted fee.
Is that discount for a nonprofit?
Nonprofit.
Whoever is a nonprofit.
The school system is a nonprofit.
So, do I need to give a motion to say, to the reduced rate?
Yeah, I feel like my motion is, I kind of like what you just said, Glenn, I think they all should be free. I think our educators deserve that, and I think we as the town should stand behind that.
Because you believe that motion stands.
Yes.
And all I ask is that, you know, that you work with staff to make sure it's the way you left it. And I know Shep does, if he's the one catering, it'll be taken care of greatly. So, that's what we ask is that, you know, that if they do vote to approve it, that you just try to leave it as the way you found it.
Probably, wait a minute, it wasn't what you got.
So, any further discussion? Not all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Okay, we have four yes, three nays in the motion text. Thank you. Okay, still in the public comment section, is there anyone here that would like to just count for on any matter?
I don't know. Do you want to speak?
I have to, yeah.
Hi. I had white notes. Hope you'll be a little patient with me tonight. May take three and a half minutes instead of three.
No worries.
Okay?
No worries.
I'm here to talk about a problem that is personal to me, and I don't know if anybody else is affected by this. Don't really think that things will change, but I have to at least try. I've talked to a couple of people about it that could do something about it, and I haven't seen any change. Each year when I come in to pay my taxes, oh, Judy's hiding behind this thing, I always say, "I don't know what I'm getting for my property taxes that I'm paying," and I am sincere about that. It's not a joke. I really don't see where my money's gone. Seven months ago, I had several strokes. I'm not sad. I'm unhappy. It's a side effect. I cry at commercials. I cry when my dog eats, so please, ignore it. But since I've had my strokes, my therapy is, one of my therapies is to walk. And I'm proud to say that I'm up to two miles when the weather will allow. So, I'm doing pretty good. I came in one time to pay my water bill and asked if there could be a notice put on the back of the bill, like we get sometimes, there's announcements and things on the back of the water bill saying to the residents of the town, "Please don't forget that you're responsible for the maintenance of the sidewalk in front of your house." Now, am I wrong on that? There is a fourth.
What do you consider maintenance?
Uh, okay.
I mean, like, if there's debris, yes, if the sidewalk's failing, no?
No, 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 it's not New York City. I know they do that kind of thing in New York and the larger towns. No, what I'm talking about is what I experience every single day when I walk. Debris falls from the trees, the trees are on their property, they're their trees. Limbs, and in the fall, leaves, very thick. You can't see what's under these leaves. So, at any time, you can step on a bunch of leaves, and underneath is a limb that's going to make you fall back or trip or whatever. When it snowed, there were several people, I hate to say it, say this is one of the biggest offenders, that didn't even try to clean the sidewalk. And then, when you walk on that snow, it packs down, and it's really like walking on ice. There were many houses that were not maintained, and I talked to a business owner, she was upset because the town didn't clean her sidewalk of the snow. And I told her, "You're responsible for it." She didn't know it. So, another reason for some kind of notice to go out to remind people. We have two businesses in town, and boy, I know I'm talking against businesses, so I'm, you know, I'm already behind the eight ball, but there's two businesses that like to put their signs right smack dab in the middle of the sidewalk so that there's, you know, not room. When my leg gives out and I'm weak and I need to hang on to my husband, there's not room for the two of us to walk on either side of those signs. There's bushes that hang over the sidewalk, you catch your clothes on them. There's trash cans left out, twenty-four-seven-three-sixty-five, they never move them. So, you either walk in the street or you walk up on their property. There's mailboxes that are over the sidewalk. I see that we have very nice wheelchair access. They look very good. Thank God I'm not in a wheelchair, but anybody in a wheelchair can get up on a sidewalk. Having help them trying to get through the sidewalk. There's bicycles, there's kids riding bicycles, and last summer, believe it or not, there were two zero radius lawnmowers on the sidewalks. So, it's not just a small problem. It's a very large problem from one end of town to the other. Now, I do have to say, one side of the street usually is much cleaner than the other, that's your side of the street, but it's easier to walk on that because it is cleaner and less cramped. So, not just for me, but for anybody who wants to walk up our town. You don't see this in Fredericksburg, when you walk through Fredericksburg.
Yeah, I think this is, I mean, this is really with our social media, our pages, we can definitely go, especially with spring coming, we can tie it to the clean suite, that we can put some stuff out on social media to remind everybody. We can hit the weed, the townspeople, that hits a lot of town residents. We, I mean, we still have that capability on the back of the bill.
We have the capability on the back of the bill. It's been our experience that, well, we actually have an insert now, we'll be on that, but the people that is actually reaching is more outside of town because we have more outside residents, and I don't know necessarily if people pay attention to what we put in town because we put it in the corner. Because, I mean, it's I didn't.
Is it something that we can use, like the flyers when we do the community announcement for that, can we, as spring gets here, we can make a drop at every house?
Yeah, whatever we're directed to.
And just, yeah.
It's an awareness, you know, people are aware that there is.
Because we did.
And, you know, you make very good points, we appreciate that, because there is issues in town. So, just make people aware of it, maybe quarterly, you know.
So, one thing that we do a lot is just, as people walk in, we talk to them, have on the door, that seems to get through by our social media, we're directed to a flyer to deliver.
I think that would be good this spring. I think we got a lot of newer residents in town that may not know their responsibilities to their sidewalks. And I think I said this a few years ago, that it's kind of all of our responsibilities that have sidewalks in front of us, that if you're not able to take care of yours necessarily, find somebody that can help you, or if you are able to take care of yours and you know your neighbor's not being willing to help them too. So, I don't have an issue, I'd like to see us do a flyer, social media, do a big push, especially as spring's coming, people get back into yards to clean their yards up, and then, hopefully, Lisa does need me. And if we start, if you see any residents that's a habitual offender because you're along the streets regularly, call Town Hall, we can make a spot check with that property open.
And it may be that we could actually put something on the door of someone that's habitual offender, to the board, say, "Okay."
Yeah.
Like, "We've noticed and we had to play."
Yeah, so if you notice after we do our push, or if you notice some that are really bad, please let Town Hall know, and we will, we will.
So, I need to be the town fang.
Well, you won't be. Hopefully, the weather will break, it will all be out on the streets for us. I ask everybody to do that, not just you, but I do see you, so I know you're out there. I know Ms. Davis is out there.
You're not Miss Amber, okay, not, we'll put your name.
We know it's either you or Ms. Davis here, because y'all are, I know y'all are regulars.
Yeah, yeah. She's walked with me, and I know probably one day she wish she hadn't walked with me because I'm walking saying, "Look at this, and see that, this is what happens," and I'm sure she's thinking, "Oh, I could have walked alone and had a really nice walk."
How did she walk very since then?
No. But it's a fact, if we don't do something, nothing will change. So, even if we do a little something, you know, I just have to see that my town cares about whether I fall down on my rear end.
Yeah, and I mean, it's nothing to say that people that are able to, if you're walking down the street and there's a stick in the middle of the sidewalk, pick it up and slide it to the side, just put it on the property side of it. And I mean, obviously, your case is a little bit different, but that's what I'm saying, if you see it and you can handle it, that's all work together as a small town.
Oh, if it was a stick, believe me, I would be kicking it to the side, but it's not, huh, Jane? It's not. It's the tree and it's shedding and clumps.
Oh, I understand, I understand.
You know, so, it's a lot. Thank you.
Anne Marie, thanks for bringing that forward, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Jen.
I just have a quick thing. Is it possible to, down the road a little bit, possibly to put some signs, like maybe on the trash, we said, "Go keep your community clean," or something in the street? I know we've worked on signs with the planning commission, but I totally get what Ms. Giles is saying about snow. It is in the bylaws that business owners and residents are responsible to clean the sidewalks. We don't have sidewalks on Mori Avenue, but I can tell you the trash that people dump, you can trip over. So, if this, maybe just, you know, where a twenty-five mile an hour sign is underneath, "Keep community clean, please clean up after yourself," just something so that she doesn't have to be the sticker, the kick sticker, you know, and doing all that. God bless you, you'd be terrific after having a stroke, I haven't done it.
About three of them.
So, just a thought for something down the road that maybe we can consider.
That reminded me that crosswalks, Chief is here. I love crosswalks because I'm walking all the time, and I do cross the street. He stopped a lady one time, I'm in the crosswalk, zoom, she goes by, and I went like this, and she waved at me. And he was right behind her, and I said, "She just waved at me, and she almost hit me in the crosswalk." And so, he went down, I know you didn't give her a ticket because you weren't there long enough, which I was glad. She was an older lady, I didn't want to see her get a ticket, but she did need to be aware. So, if we're going to put up another crosswalk, we need to put something in that crosswalk to let people know that pedestrians have the right of way.
And we, and I will, I will go to Vida and stress that again, but I can tell you that I fought this battle several years ago, that our streets are not wide enough to put that little barrier. And I don't understand it. We can park two cars there, I think we need, for example, twenty-eight feet on the roadway, and we had twenty-six, but I will definitely fight that battle. Because the city, they own their own streets in downtown Fredericksburg, so they're able to put what they want, but I don't see why we couldn't put one of those signs that you write in the middle.
They come different sizes, and the one I'm thinking of is a little round base, not the one that sits.
Yeah, no, I know what you're talking about, and I've petitioned them, and I'll go to bat when we have this meeting again and try to get that done.
I'll go with you. Okay, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anne Marie.
Is there anyone else that would like to just count?
Do I go now?
Yep.
Go for it.
Thank you. Mayor, I think, thoughtful, trying to.
We do have you on the agenda for later.
You do?
Yeah.
So you want to try to wait then?
Well, it's up to you, but he's here for the courthouse.
Yeah, let's knock it out and listen to it. My name is Tony Calkins. I'm with TM Associates, representing the owners of Courthouse Land Parcs. And we are applying for tax credits with the HDA this year. Not to worry about death, this is pretty boring stuff. But basically, when we apply, it's a competitive situation with other developments, other companies. If we win this competitive round, we will win tax credit, which will allow us to rehabilitate the property. This is courthouse lane one, thirty-two unit, saw. That's a full rehab, it's interior, it's kitchen, it's floors, it's drywall where necessary. Any AVA issues, wider doorways, things like that, we can repair that as well. So we're doing about forty thousand dollars a year. In order to win, we have to get as many points as we can in this competitive situation. One of the things that has come up this year is that the HDA has asked us to ask you for tax abatement on the improved value of the property post-rehab for a couple of, three years, you know, some reway. So they put in the competitive manual saying, "Please go to the county, go to county, ask for a payment on the improved value for a couple of years." Can you leave it? They don't specify dollar. How's that? I don't want to get too close to it.
It's still going in and out.
All right. All right, then. Fun's not allowed enough. If we, like I said, if we get, compete, or if we get, you know, are competitive, we get this extra five points or so, then we can go ahead and do the rehab. My understanding was, and I think there's a couple of samples around, that we need to have on the ordinance. So this is all new to me, I'm trying to follow where it's supposed to be going. So that's what we're asking for tax abatement for the post, two, three years on the improved value post rehab.
So the way I understand this is, we'll have to advertise for the ordinance to be posted and...
Right.
Right on in April. And basically, what it is, is you'll still pay your taxes on your current assessment value.
Right.
You're looking for potentially two to three years of just an improvement. And during those two to three years, you still pay your current assessment value.
That's right, that's right.
Really, we're not losing any funds at this time, because if you don't do the improvements, we're still getting the same tax assessment. So it's really a win-win for us both.
It will be reassessed for how many years anyway.
Right.
It's a reassessment. I'm not sure what cycle the county is on, but you did it, what, two years ago?
I think so, a couple of years.
Yeah, so it may fall within the cycles anyways. So even if it did, it may only be a year or two, then we would lose those improved values.
Right.
Doesn't the county do an assessment on their own on the improvement that's submitted? Doesn't the county go ahead and add an improvement tax after rehab?
I'm sure they do.
It gets attached to the building permits, so the commissioner of government gets that information and reassesses it anytime there's a improvement.
Yes, so there will be assessment, but it's still at the level.
So the action we need to take tonight is to approve the authority to advertise? Do we need to determine the length of the time?
No, we'll do that at that hearing, I think, in the draft ordinance. It was three years with a maximum of two thousand five hundred. What we're asking for, and I would ask you to do it under new business, because it makes it easier for Melissa to do the minutes, but what we're asking for is permission to advertise the ordinance. And it would be at that meeting, what they did in the other jurisdictions. It's a two-step process. If you sit forward at that meeting, you would pass a resolution designating that specific geographic area as a rehabilitation area. And then you would adopt the ordinance saying that you were going to do that payment. And Andrea, may I answer this?
And Mr. Peck, I do think we're going to need the length of time and dollar amounts, but yeah.
Oh, yeah. And the ordinance, you have copies there, part that you drafted, it is three years and twenty-five hundred?
Okay.
Maximum twenty-five hundred per year.
Per year, maximum of maintenance.
Correct.
Per year, yeah.
Okay, well, we've got that information and for clerical purposes, we'll address that under new business. And everybody in the meantime can be considering the three-year plan.
So if we win, we'll start by the end of the year, not shovel the ground, but we'll be teeing it up.
Thank you. I'll let you have the floor.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Does there anyone else that would like to address council?
I wasn't planning on dating, taking over Allen. And the lady that just spoke, it reminded me of something that council and the town did years ago when my husband and I think Glenn and others will probably remember this, is we had a town beautification weekend and council members came out with saws and all this stuff and trimmed back bushes and trees over the sidewalks. And there was a program where someone from each of the street was quote captain, got two or three people on Mori Avenue or on Hope Street, whatever, to work together to clean up that, you know, get everything in order to look nice with spring. And I just thought maybe that might be a suggestion of something that I enjoy a couple of times a year. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
I remember Spencer really did a good job there. We might recruit him again.
No, he does.
I was talking, trimming trees and everything on the street. And we want to treat it as well.
Right. Thank you, Barbara, yes, I do remember.
Next item, we'll move to staff reports. Sorry, do you don't want to stick around? Reese will let you know.
No, no, it's...
Okay.
Just be correct, it was maximum two thousand in the draft.
Right. Okay. Police chief's report?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. Is there any questions on the police department report?
I have one question, maybe.
Yes, ma'am.
The total revenue was not for two thousand nineteen, or?
I don't get into revenue before, I don't...
Is as of July one, so FY nineteen, as of July one, twenty eighteen.
Okay.
I don't include it, I don't do the projection on the wrong information.
So it's forty thousand dollars from July until December, is that correct?
Yes.
Just one comment. I know in the unfinished business, we have a few policies that we want to get approved tonight. We have a memo from the town attorney involving the police policy. I've spoken with the town attorney, the town manager, and the police chief. And I'd like to form a, I guess it would kind of be a subcommittee or a third committee to task them with, right now, the police policy is written to be, to a point that we can get accredited. Well, as you know, we're still building our police department out and we may not necessarily be at our accreditation point. So we need a policy, we need to pare that policy down. And the chief understands what we're speaking of, to just a functional policy at this time. So I've spoken with Ms. Howard and Ms. Pauls about joining with the guidance of the town attorney and the police chief, working together as those four can and where the town manager needs, to pare down that to the essential policies so we can get this policy in place. And then from that point on, we can build out as we can and we can fund it or we can afford it or we see it as functional to reach that accreditation point. But at this point, we just, we need to pare it back down to a manageable document that we can get approved and make sure that the police department has something, some guidelines and some key areas. So we'll still move down after this to item eleven to approve the police policies that we need to get in front of. And then hopefully, we, because we've kind of flopped around on how we need to eat the elephant, because it is a big policy. And we've tried to take a couple of different bites, different ways, and it just hasn't worked. So I think if we go back with these two ladies helping us, with the town attorney's guidance and the police chief's expertise, pare it down to a manageable document, we can then build out from there, I think is a good way to do this.
Chief, I did have a question for you. On the further training on the Omnigo software, is that training for you? Who is that training for?
That was for me and the young lady that works for Friday, she's in the administrative system.
That meant for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there additional costs for that or additional costs?
No, that's all included in the base price. And that actually went live, it was updated, I've been there a full Thursday, I believe, but that system actually went live Friday afternoon.
And what do we see, what's the benefit of that system?
We're able to do our case reporting now at town. All it gives me the ability to track training, to track inventory of property on the town, on the police app. Just a great deal of things that I'm able to track. It totally changed our reporting format, unfortunately, from what we were all used to for many years, but I believe in the long run, it's a streamlined process. But the main thing it does is beggars is compliance with our requirements, we're starting an ad, so we'll see that one.
Okay. Yeah, that's the biggest key is, we had to come into compliance to be able to get this almost nineteen, eighteen thousand dollars in grant funding.
It'll be twenty, almost twenty-five by the end of the year.
By the end of the year.
The year, yearly is twenty thousand.
Okay, it's due for an increase next this week. There's a small increase this year, they go next year.
Okay, good, thank you.
I saw that online, the twenty-four, five eighteen, I think was what the grant said. And we have it as eighteen.
One thing I did want to add, on the VDA stuff, let's not forget about our handicap access ramps on Main Street. I know it's been brought up before, sometimes we guys go to talk to them. That issue has been, I know it's been brought up by certain members of council, but it's also been brought up by several citizens as far as access to the Mexican restaurant. Evidence right now, there's people that make houses are busy destinations.
Are you asking for access ramp in front of the restaurant?
Well, it's my understanding that you require it, but that's just my understanding.
We'll add it to our list to find out what VDA requirements are, because if they need to come in and put them in, then...
You need the ADA compliant, whatever the ADA regulations, that's what we need to follow.
Yeah. We may have to determine that this is a long spot too, you know, so they need to lay away and all do with this.
Yep, we'll address that. Any other questions? Thank you, chief, thank you. Moving along to our public works report, are there any questions or comments?
Can you give us an update on the construction project that's going on? Where we are, what the process is?
It's coming along good. They're about, probably like a week back, you know, just from the rain. Other than that, they're moving, you know, some days are good, some days are slow. They're, they got two crews on here now. Right now, we're having issues over by Manhole Twelve. The dirt is so sandy, it keeps wanting to fall in and they're having issues with that. So they get that squared away. I think March fourteenth, we're due for the water outage, that other line of Mory.
And what's the target completion date of the building?
July, I think they got it like the tenth or something like that. It's early part of July. We talked about if it was going to, you know, be stalled like August or September due to the paving, that they could get a third crew in here. But, you know, then they're worried about everybody stepping on everybody's toes. So they're trying to avoid that, you know.
So they're currently working on the Milford Street, obviously, in the connection from Mori, Milford.
Yes, yeah, we're still on there.
Yeah, I know it's Mory. I thought the plant was due hopefully going up at the same time.
Well, first thing, it's the water, we got to set back through the water line. Remember, we had to move it, I don't know. So we got, Reed Engineer had to come in and redo it, redo the...
The Mory?
Yes, the Mory. But as of right now, it's March fourteenth, we're having to shut, you know, the alleys and should be ready to roll.
Yeah, we're starting to roll up Mory.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I know Milford Street looks like it's a mess, but I think they've done an excellent job of, having to open and close that hole every single day is just a tedious job. And with the bad weather we've had, I think they've addressed a lot of the potholes. I'm very surprised I haven't had one complaint on Milford Street, so...
Yeah, I mean, they do a great job, easy to work with.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think they had some issues today, but I wasn't here this afternoon and Johnny was off, but I think with the dust, the guy was sleeping the streets, but he needed a little bit of water from the dust.
Got it.
Yeah.
Billy, I just wanted to notice your job efforts over at the plant, your inspection with the DEQ and how well it's meant and how appreciative we are.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
That you cleaned up over there and had a good report, that's great news.
Oh, thank you. Well, it's still a work in progress, but...
It's been come a long way, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Billy. Next on the agenda is Joe Elsa, events coordinator.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me tonight. Unless you all have any questions, the big takeaways from our report, we've been doing a lot of work on work with the Economic Development Authority. We had a very successful meeting with the HDA, who came and did the educational seminar on the opportunity zone. It was very, very well attended. For a meeting of that nature, we had a lot of people from all over the county come. And so that was a good educational seminar. Additionally, the Cardinal Assistance Program, the Cardinal team, will be coming to Bowling Green to tour the town and to meet with various groups on April second. And if you'll notice in my packet, there's an agenda that was sent out. And so we are inviting council, members of town council, to come and meet with the Cardinal team from four to five P.M. on April second. So if you were able to make it, please do so. We also had time slotted out for the EDA, for the Main Street Business Group, and also a tour. There was some debate on how long it would take to tour the town. I've been an hour and fifteen. So... Those are the major takeaways from our report. I'm working, so please, please come April second if you're able. It's important that we get as much as we can out of this study and assessment. And finally, I'm just working, my main focus right now in terms of events is the Lion Festival. So that's ongoing. You all should be seeing a graphic out and some strong promotion within the next, I'd say in the next week. You'll certainly see a save the date by the fifteenth of March. You'll certainly see a save the date by the fifteenth of March. So I'm working with a graphic artist now to finalize that. We've got several wineries confirmed, including a couple of new ones. So wineries that couldn't be bothered in the past have actually called me this year and said we want to be a part of it. So the event is building and we've confirmed the front is for Big Band, we've confirmed that the Baron Chef wants to come back, so they had a good, a good experience last year. The biggest difference about the event this year is that we will be having a Belmont Stakes viewing party, which is, is cool. So we'll actually be streaming the race and working to figure out the logistics on exactly how that's going to happen. But I believe in solutions and so I'll figure it out. But I, I don't like to market things that I can't deliver on, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna figure this one out.
What's the target date?
I'm sorry?
The date?
The date is June eighth, which is the day of, again, of the Belmont Stakes. I'm also working very closely with Meadow Events Park and Secretariat's Meadow. These are the folks that work at the mansion over there and do big tours. They also throw to the Virginia Horse Festival. So I'm being creative with some advertising dollars that we would use in the past. Last year, we, we tried an advertisement in Cooperative Living. I'm not sure how effective it was. This year, we're taking some of those advertising dollars and actually sponsoring the Kentucky Derby viewing party at the Virginia Horse Festival. And we are the, we will be the exclusive sponsor for that. So we'll be there and marketing our event to these fine enthusiasts and, and I think there's a, I think the demographic is, is similar to what we're targeting for, for the Bowling Green event. So we're trying different things, we're, we're trying to build this thing out. I had a success, I had two successful meetings this week, one with the senior leadership team for Parlay County Public Schools, which is all of the administrators, the director of H.R., the director of, you know, transportation, director of, you know, all, all the directors. I had a meeting with them and informed them of the event. And yesterday morning, I had a meeting, I spoke at the principals' roundtable meeting and, and asked for their support because we are supporting the schools. And, and I said it's really not a no-brainer. The more successful this event, the more net revenue is realized, the more donations we're able to make. And I know that they are very appreciative of the donation that we make annually. I don't see any reason why that donation couldn't be that much more based on how successful the event is. So I'm looking forward to it and working on and otherwise, if anyone has any questions.
How do we determine that, Joe Elsa, that what we would get schools?
Well, I mean, I guess ultimately it's up to, up to council, but the idea is that proceeds from the event would be, would be donated to the school system.
So in years past, the first year, we didn't have a, a net revenue, so we just made a donation. Last year, we had a, say, a nine hundred dollar.
It was nine hundred and forty.
So we rounded that up to a thousand and donated a thousand to them. But basically, my understanding is that we would donate anything above.
What it costs to put the event on. So the idea is to cover our costs on the event so the town's not out of anything and hopefully anything beyond that, we can make a direct impact with, with our, with our students in the county. So, but ultimately, Jimmy, that's, that's your call.
So here's my challenge to council is that I would love to see every council member and their spouse, and I challenge each one of y'all to reach out and bring two more couples with you. Try, try to, the, the way we can make this successful is for us to be involved also. If the people show up to our events and we're not there and we're not showing a vested interest in it, then why should they? So take this on public note and I'd like to see each one of us here there and challenge.
Is this for the June eighth event?
Yeah.
Yes.
Or, or if you can, two tickets and give them to somebody that can attend.
As a gift.
As a gift. It, it just, if we're going to host these events, and I know that I missed a couple last year, like the USO dance, and I felt horrible about it. But the Wine Festival is something that we can all get on board, but because it's a fun day for us and the volunteers have a good time volunteering and.
The Wine Festival is the event that you guys created this position to do, which is to celebrate the history of the town, brand the town through our history and through events, and ultimately make an impact in the community that translate into economic stimulus in the town, whether that's business development or residential rooftops. This is the event that has that potential. It's not the Harvest Festival, it's not the Christmas Parade. This is the event that can attract people from outside of our region. We can capture outside tax dollars. This is the event to showcase our town, this is it. So it's, it's important that we see it get as good and as successful as we believe it has the potential to be, and your support is appreciated.
And we get to showcase a property that we don't normally have access to.
Right.
And you will have the stream. I can't, I can't miss the stakes, so you will have that stream.
If, if that falls through, then you're more than welcome to.
I'm trying to remember, because I, I was there last year, I know there was a lot of thunderstorms around. There was a large tent, do you ever do like, like rent just little small tents, like and have that available or?
We have not in the past. Budgets for this event are very limited.
Yeah.
Tents are very expensive. That's not to say that there aren't different ways that we can work the budget to accommodate that. We're going to have to have more tenant areas this year because it's the viewing party. And if it does rain just a little bit, you know, my idea is that I'll have flats, some flat screen TVs out there, and so they'll have to be covered. So we will, you should expect to see more than just that one tent this year. It's just going to be, having to be a little creative with the budget.
Yeah, and I was, I mean, as, as a person who has a ticket, I mean, you know, you can go anywhere and like buy access to a cabana or whatever, so I'm not, you know, I got other thoughts on that.
Sure, good idea.
Ten by ten, if you want.
Thanks, I'm great, thank you.
Here, here you have a coordinated meeting on two nineteen with forty-eight P.M. Did you just coordinate the meeting? Did you go to the meeting? If you went to, what was it about?
I went to the meeting, yes, I coordinated the meeting and I was in attendance. This was a meeting that was called by the EDA. And it was ultimately just to better understand, it was called a population report, reported population from the base. And it was, it was mainly a meeting to better understand those numbers and understand the mythology behind the numbers, algorithms behind the numbers, and how they came up with them. You know, it was, it was a productive meeting. They were fairly limited into, a lot of their numbers are predictive averages and things like that. So I think the EDA was, if I may speak on their behalf, was looking for more, like looking for some hard information, and I'm not sure if we actually got that, but the objective of the meeting was to better understand that report.
I was wondering if they give the EDA what they're looking for. I mean, it's, it's the same number we had two years ago, basically. Did it say they strode or what?
No, it's a different set of numbers than we, you've given them a report, a public report that was done, and that was the reason we're trying to verify, see what that is. So we're trying to make sure that, you know, the numbers are real, not real where they are, so it makes it a valid information to give to a prospective investor. So we're trying to get to that point.
They're not, they're not giving out information as easily as they were.
I'll, I'll talk about the EDA committee report.
Are there any other questions?
I have a question on your cardinal agenda for the day. How are you going to reach out to the businesses and let them know?
Well, I've asked for the Main Street Business Group's help. I've also sent an email out to everyone that I have email addresses for. Unfortunately, we do not have email addresses for every business license in town. But I have spoken to the Main Street Business Group and asked for their help. We, I've sent an email out outside of me going door to door by myself. I'm not sure what else to do, but I would encourage council, members of council as well, to help spread that word.
Could you maybe post a notice or something on, you know?
On Facebook?
Well, on Facebook.
Or the internet, sure.
Or the, or, you know, like you do for the Harvest Festival, that they're being meeting.
Sure.
With business owners or something, just to let them know, just a suggestion.
The, the mediums of communication that I have available to me are used at exhaustion. Like I said, I do everything that I can. The fact that we don't have a local paper has made things very challenging in terms of getting information out to folks, to people that aren't involved or do not participate in social media or don't have access to internet or have computers. But ultimately, we are, with everything that we do, we're exhausting every option that we have to get the word out.
We'll certainly put it on our side, we the people, but maybe the town will put it on theirs.
Certainly, absolutely, sure. Thank you all for your time.
Next on the agenda is the town clerk treasurer's report. Are there any questions on that report? Hearing that, we'll move on to.
I just add one thing to point out, just real quick. The water, the water disconnection on Maury Avenue. The notice has been put on Facebook, it's had a lot of views. We told every person that comes in here, we're going to hear the bills, hey, your water's going to be out on this day, we have fire out in front, and Kelvick will also be delivering door to door. And it's on our website. There's no reason that people are worrying, you shouldn't know about the water disruption, but it's, anyone says anything, there'll be marginal feet from nine to five, but we told everyone from eight to six, just a few procrastinators out there.
So are they certain they're going to be able to get the water back on by the end of the day?
That is what Kelvick said, we haven't been called.
You know, what's the plan B in case that doesn't happen?
That, I don't know, I'm not part of that conversation.
It'll work until they get it.
Cut hard showers.
Yeah. I mean, they'll, they'll work until it's done?
I don't, I don't think they're going to call it quits since they hate it or, I'm a lot of those.
I just want to make sure that we understand that, because you never know.
All right, moving on to the town manager's report.
I've just got a couple of quick things to add is hopefully tomorrow, we'll start recording our Verizon system, phone system, over to the voiceover internet system. It's going to give us a lot more capability and cost several thousand dollars a year or less, so we're looking forward to that. We're working, the next two weeks, we should start initiating the migration of our email system. Hopefully by the April first meeting, you'll have email that will function on your home computers, on your phones, and you'll get everything that you're supposed to be getting and be able to filter out the things that you don't want to get. And finally, I should put it in the heads up, and I mentioned it again in my budget hearing, but you have a budget workshop two weeks from tonight at seven o'clock, March twenty-first.
So who's doing the voiceover?
Move on office. Move on office.
Just to confirm the work sessions at seven also.
At seven, seven, is that here?
It'll be, yes. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Any comments?
Ms. Mayor, I'd like to call item number nine and ten out for further discussion of later time.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with item eight, the bill? We have a motion by Mr. Wright, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All, close, push and pass. We'll go right into the proposed job description.
I'd like to, I have a tip first, Mayor, if I could, please. We're looking at Davis Court Main Street, Main Replacement Project. Are these the bids that have come in? This is town manager.
Yes.
So there's an extreme swing in the bids. Is the scope understood by everybody or did?
They were, Web Engineering had drawn up the, the plans and specs for it. They were all given the set of plans and specs and they all bid, you know, the same plans and specs.
Same scope of work, everybody's got the same understanding of it. And so, I mean, you've got the guys that are here now that are mobilized, that are twice what the low number is. Are we planning on going the low number?
Yes, we are. We've had experience with this contractor in the past. They've done excellent work. I will say in the past that their work sometime, because they can get here immediately and do things, was a little bit pricey, but the work was always great quality and it just looks like they're looking for some work right now.
So it looks like you've already awarded the contract to them, is that correct?
No, I have not.
Request for action, so, okay. So you want to take the request for action at this point in time?
Yes, I would like to move forward with the line for.
Is there a motion to accept the bid from K.L. Langford Excavating for the amount of sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirteen cents for the Davis Court Water Main Replacement Project? Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we, that we accept the bid from Langford with associated evaluation.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. McGee, is there a second? About Mrs. Coles, is there any discussion?
Yeah, again, Mr. Mayor, it does really concern me that there's that significant amount in there and town manager, you're extremely confident.
I, I'm confident in, I'll just draw attention to our sewer project, you know, one was twice as much as the, the other.
And I think, I think one, one bonus for Langford is he is local and his mobilization costs are very minimal compared to some of the others. But I, I know we've used them for emergency repairs over the years, we've never had an issue with them except for sometimes their pricing was the opposite way, they were higher, but.
Can we try and contact them and, and discuss it with them?
Have you done that?
There is, yeah, I mean, to make sure that they.
That we, we shouldn't, according to counsel, our legal counsel, we should, they, they have bid on a spec that was given to them and they should produce on that spec.
And when they did, they're, they're bound to it.
I understand that, but my, and I go to a march point is, has Web reviewed the scope of work they've given and have they had a discussion with the apparent low bidder? Have we had as a town, a discussion with a apparent low bidder? Make sure we stand in front of them and say, look, guys, we want to make sure that you've got it all covered here. The, the first thing we don't want to do is get somebody that's low-bidded, missed something, and then they come back and go, I can't do it, I got to get a change order and get that done. So have we had that discussion with them?
I have not.
As a legal matter, if they've submitted a bid and they made a mistake, they have to eat it.
I, I certainly understand that, but then we have an issue.
Right.
Then we have an issue. We don't want to have that issue. The purpose of having a face-to-face discussion is going, I want to make sure that you've got it all covered here, because they do have the right to, to redact their bid, to pull it out, anything behind the scope was written, the RFP was written. You do, if you have made a mistake, you can pull that back out there.
So do we open ourselves up to an issue that, for devil's advocate, we, we, we go to Langford and say, hey, are you sure that you got everything in there? And then do we go back to Kelvick and say, your bid's actually higher?
No, that's not.
Are you sure you want to stay in the bid also?
That's not the way the process works. You go to the low bidder and you make sure they're qualified and certified to do that and they understand the scope. If they're not, then you have the capability going to center who was next. So I, I want to make sure that Web says that they've had a discussion with Langford, they all understand the scope, there was no ambiguities in the scope, and that we're going to get what we think we're going to get. what we think we're going to get.
Web didn't have the discussion. Web provided us the documents, and Billy put out the bid to the...
I understand that. And so, has anybody had a discussion with Langford?
I have not, Billy has had. I truly believe that they're just trying to get some work and show that they're good citizens, because they've been working the past.
I appreciate that, but for the safety of our town funds...
We will go whenever the attorney tells me. I mean, this is the low bids, and that's the process we went through, and that's what you've got in front of you.
But it's also up to us as council members to direct this as well. And what Glenn is saying is correct. If they come in here and they can't complete it, now we're starting to put out more money to get it completed, and then we've got to sue them.
We, we, as council members, have somebody on the payroll that handles the legal side of enforcement?
I understand.
We need to let Andrea rule on how we need to proceed. Do we need to go back and present this to them? If we don't do that, are we covered by the contract? If they did miss something, we...
Can I ask a question? Have we used these people before? I understood that we had.
Yes, yeah.
So where are our trust issues here? I don't understand.
Sometimes they were way higher, sometimes they were way lower.
But they always provided us with what they said they were? Have they always given us what, have we gotten what we paid for in the past?
Sure, yeah. They've lived up to their commitment, but my issue with it is...
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
I've had jobs every day.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
There are things, I haven't seen the scope, I haven't seen the RFP. Have you reviewed the RFP? So we need to make sure before we put RFPs out for $100,000, that we have it, make sure that legal has reviewed that document, make sure it's appropriate. I just want to make sure that they're okay, but I'm fine with it. If they're good, they got it done, they got it covered, I'm good. But if they come back to you and say, you know, I thought that said this, and no, I can't do that, we need to know that upfront.
So right now...
Not six months into the project.
There is a big gap.
Two things. One, we have a motion on the floor to approve, to award this. So any change from that, we need to do an amendment. Second question, second question is, can we give two weeks, let the town attorney review the RFP, the contract, and we vote on this at the work session? Or do we need to do this now?
I, you can probably do it at that. You know, our only concern is that we want it done before the repaving. It's, you know, it's a very small project. I think you've all been over there, you know, it's like five houses long. And I guess that shoot up to Main Street, but yes, we'll work out where we want to do it.
Okay, so can we retract it? Do we need to vote?
Which way you all, what's council's pleasure?
Do you all want to move forward with the motion if we vote no? Or do we just want to retract the motion?
I'm making the motion.
Yeah, I made the motion, so we can put it on the floor and talk about it, that's the purpose of that. You know, I'm good with pulling the motion back away, letting the attorney review the RFP that was put out, and make sure that we're clear on what we have done. If everything is good, and she's okay with that, then I'd say, we'll sit on the floor at that point, I'm next.
Twenty first?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
It'll take an hour.
You're withdrawing, you're withdrawing.
I'm withdrawing the motion.
So the motion to award the contract is withdrawn at this time? Okay, next item that you wanted to pull with the proposed job description?
That is correct. I have a couple of questions on there. It looks like we're asking for approval for two-paid, part-time seasonal positions. Is that correct? Seasonal brown keepers, two-paid seasonal brown keepers, are they part-time or full-time?
They'll be seasonal.
So they're also part-time?
Well, I mean, the plan is to use this for some high school kids during the summer, and it can be up to 40 hours a week, because if they're seasonal, it doesn't have to be under the 30 hours.
But there would be benefits?
No, no benefits. This is intended to have people help us with the mowing and the cleaning and things like that during the summer season.
So where do we stand right now with staffing for the groundskeeping?
We have money in the budget. This, we were switching over from the contractor to this, but I didn't get these put in the personnel book, so we handled the contractors. We ended up paying benefits for them, because we used the manpower service, they put a health insurance charge.
Were we planning on that?
Last year, I was planning on putting the budget for these to be part-time high school kids. We just didn't have them out because of oversight on my part, and used the contractors again.
So my question was, what's our staffing level right now for the outside?
Yes, we have money in the budget for part-time people.
Now, what's our staffing level now? Who do we have staff right now to do this?
Justin and Sean.
Okay, is Justin dedicated to this, or is...
No, both of those work on the water system, as well as any other public works that sometimes fill in at the sewer plant on an impede basis.
Okay, so we don't have, they're not full-time maintenance outside the plant, right?
No, we look at that budget, we have one other open position right now on that. But in the summertime, with the edging and a lot of activities, you know, we don't have all the fire hydrants painted and stuff, because we can't use the people from Water out there to do that, because they're mowing lawns. Best idea is we'll catch up. We have 78 fire hydrants, I believe, to paint. You know, there's plenty, plenty of catch-up work worth to do with these employees, and they are included in the budget. This is the job specs, just to have a position to put them into.
So this, instead of using contractors this year and paying a higher rate to the manpower, we're going to actually hire these people as a seasonal, summertime job, no benefits, at a cheaper rate than what we were paying last year?
Right.
So what was that?
I don't know if it's a cheaper rate. That's, that was the plan a year ago, that was approved, it's oversight. This has nothing to do whether you approve funding or hiring of them. All this does is create the job description, should you budget for those positions that I get hired to.
So how much did we pay contractors last year for that?
I don't know off the top of my head, Glenn. That's the, that's a budget decision. This is, this is, this is the job description.
I understand, but I mean, it has budget personnel that looked at this, and so that's why I'm asking the question.
Glenn, I've answered it, I don't know off the top of my head.
That's just the name of the committee, they're both, the council day is the committee. This is, just so everybody knows, we can have the discussion on the budget here in just a second, but we've worked to update our personnel policy with real job descriptions, and basically that's what this is. We do need to still have your conversation.
Yeah.
When it comes time for the budget cycle, but right now, what we're looking for is just to get the job descriptions in there, so when we do hire these, we have some type of requirements for them. They know what they're doing, and they know why they've gotten hired, and if they're not meeting these job descriptions, then we can get rid of them.
All it is, is just create a, create a job.
Okay, take over, what contractor was doing last time?
Right.
Fill the gap that he's not... Okay, I understand.
The contractors, we repay them next year, we need benefits and everything else.
I don't know why we did that, but that's another issue.
Well, when you...
No, that's a different issue.
Yeah, when you go with the staffing agency, you pay a premium, and that includes their benefits.
Yeah, okay. All right, the next question I had was on the part-time police officers. We're looking for four auxiliary police officers?
This is just creating the job descriptions for the four that we currently have.
That we currently have?
Currently have, yes.
Okay, so now you just call them, something else, there's no difference in that?
Again, these are job descriptions, they have nothing to do with this. The police officer position is Mr. Honeycutts, there isn't one in the book, so I, we needed to create that, because it had gotten left out over the past. The other are, the police chief is asked that we create auxiliary positions, which are non-paid, that over time, that he will use as he has auxiliary people, and depending upon the duties that he assigns to them, will depend on which one of those classifications they fall into. Is that correct, David?
Yes, sir.
Just for the public to understand, this is only proposed job descriptions for current jobs that we have on the books. It's not adding any people, it's just giving them, like, if we were to add that seasonal ground person, we have something to reference, here's your job description, this is what you're being hired for, these are what we're expecting you to do, this is what we are going to evaluate you on, and move forward. But we're not approving any additional positions at this time. This is just giving us the backbone, so when they get hired, we have, you can say, this is what you're signed up to do, is this what you're applying for? Do you understand your requirements? So...
It breaks down what you're doing.
So, is there...
So it really wasn't clear, because it really indicates that there are four positions that we're going to hire four.
No.
No, that's okay. It doesn't say that.
I mean, it doesn't say anything about hiring, it just said proposed job description.
Right, why do you have a job description, not going to hire somebody?
Because we found that we didn't have job descriptions.
Mr. McGeehan, look at, look at Caroline County, look at any, any agency, they have job descriptions that they don't currently have built. We want to have our staffing plan there to those decisions.
It helps with accountability, too.
Is there a motion to approve the job descrip, proposed job descriptions as they are? We have a motion by Mr. Gaines.
I second it.
Second by Mrs. Gaines. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Two opposed. Okay, four, five, yes. All right, moving on to item number 11, the police policies. These policies have been reviewed and approved by the police chief, the town manager, town attorney, and the policy committee. These operations have suspended by, have been suspended by our police department. Approval of these policies will allow resumption of these operations. I will direct any questions to the town attorney.
Okay, thank you. At last month's meeting, council directed me to review all of the policies, which I've done, and I've given you kind of a detailed memo. But there are three particular policies that I expanded, domestic assault, sexual assault, and photo lineup. I find that they are great, and would ask that council approve those. In addition to that, the chief asked that I look at the use of force policy. And I did. The only, I do have a suggested revision in terms of if an officer is involved in a shooting. I modified some of the language. Previously, the policy stated that the officer would get a psychological. I just kind of tweaked the language to say, we just want to know if he's fit for duty, and if any necessary services have been completed in order for the officer to return to work. So if council's comfortable with that policy, I would ask that you approve that one as well. The rest of them, I think the committee is going to review, we're going to work together on them.
That's what we talked about earlier, was the rest of them, we would work to get those done.
Well, that was just, I had, I was just pointing out to council that one of the weapons included in the, in the policy is the use of a shotgun. There's nothing illegal. No.
I have that chance, I'll have to review.
I know. But you need approval of that, right? The other thing is, is that with the use of force, it is something that you could also modify with the rest of the policies. So the idea is just to help the chief do what, what he needs to do.
So right now, we're looking for a motion to approve police policies 2-21, 4-6, 7-3,
And 5-2.
And then 5-2.
Yes.
And from that point forward, we'll follow, hopefully, the plan that we discussed earlier.
I'll make a motion, and then we accept policy, police policies, 2.21, 4.46, 7-3, and 5-2.
And is that 5-2, as I have recommended, it be amended?
As it, as being amended, as the attorney has recommended.
Okay, thank you.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gaines, and a second by Ms. Howard. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion passes. Step one. Yeah, step two. Okay, we've already addressed item number 12. I have, hold on one second, we have the three additions to the new business that we need to talk about first. We will start with the authority to advertise the courthouse lane revitalization.
I'll make a motion that we accept, that we accept that.
That we authorize the advertising. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. McGeehan, is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Ms. Howard, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. You'll notify the gentleman's market, okay? Second is, there's a resolution in front of you regarding the town to join the Main Street program as an affiliate member. Is there a motion to approve that resolution? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gaines, is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Ms. Howard, was that, Ms. Gaines? Somebody at that end? They do. All in favor, raise your right hand. There should have been further discussion, but... All opposed, like so. Next is the authorization for the town manager to apply $47,000 grant from the Department of Housing and Community Development, that's due March 22nd. Any questions the town manager can answer regarding that?
This is, Mr. Mayor, this is a, this is a grant, and it just came to our attention this week, along with the resolution to join the Main Street affiliate program. And what this does is, is it's, the building owners will put together a package and give it to Reese, which y'all have to submit it in through the town, because it's got to go in through the town. And what it does is, it's for the community economic development, it's to be used, you know, we will specify, like, we're looking at possibly maybe beautifying the main entrance in all three on one here, use the money for that. It can be used for benches in town, it can be used for website development, for the group, it's a small amount, but it's a start, it's like a little block program.
Does the money go to the EDA or to the council?
No, it goes to, it goes to the town, to be sure, and I think to the builders group, building group.
What's the building group?
The business owner group, excuse me.
Is it dedicated, you go to them specifically? No restrictions?
Well, here's what happened, is we met with Department of Housing and Community Development about what development tools they had, and what they could do to help us market the opportunity zone, and how we could get our Main Street program up and going, and how to organize our downtown business owners into a corporation that could promote downtown becoming independent, collaborative player with the town, to leverage each other's resources and access to different funding sources. They brought up that the first step would be for the town to apply, since they weren't organized, they recommended, the business owners group haven't yet, or the nonprofit group, they recommended that the town go ahead... they recommended that the town go ahead and apply for affiliate status for the Main Street program that gives the downtown business owners and the town access to marketing templates they have. They have different, different graphics that you can use to promote downtowns. They have different, it's a program that, that they have different programs to help you promote your downtown and how to use the various tools to help revitalize and track businesses. They also pointed out that each year they have a program that gives $7,000 worth of implementation to, to groups to implement some of those activities. They indicated that if we did affiliate status, that you could possibly apply for it on behalf of the business owners this year. Time crunch is, you know, we still have to get the, through the process of the approving this as, as associate, and somebody would have to put together an application. Joe Alson contacted the business owner group. They, they indicated that they would be more than willing to try to put together an application. We would have to submit it through of, of things that they would want to do, that we would have to submit it through the online system as the applicant until their form is a corporation. We would have to ask it, act as their fiscal agent, be sure that the mail is appropriately expended according to the program guidelines. So the first step is, is to get the affiliate status, which I think is a no-brainer. We should be doing that because then it gives us access to a national program, so best management practices and, and tools that they have available for members. And if the downtown, I, as we explained to the downtown business owners, we certainly don't have time here at the town. We're still in tremendous catch-up mode on things to do that. But if they did that and the council approved that, that we would, and they authorized me to submit that through, through the town on their behalf, I'd be more than willing to do that.
I'm all in favor of downtown beautification. $7,000 is a little, but it's a start. You know, it's a positive thing. And, you know, where that can be applied, I'll be interested to see where the business affiliates decide they want to do that. Will they come back to the council and say, here are the things that we want to do with $7,000, is that the plan?
The application's due March 22nd.
Okay. Right? So I'd love to see us get that, apply for 10 times that if you can get it because we need that in town.
Just seven.
Yeah, I understand that.
And what it, what it does is, we can, we can apply for this now, but by the time it gets awarded, I think it gets awarded the end of May, I mean, end of June, the building, the business group has to submit the application to join as an associate member. So then that way, the money can be used then, you know, for us to use to help out.
We're doing associate member, but you also have to be an associate member down as an associate member, start with.
Yeah, we have to do all our group, and we go from there as a corporation and then into a nonprofit organization.
Yep.
This is, shows a good faith that I put up a town working with the business owners and another man or outside of our EDA, which we're very involved with and, you know, appreciate all that.
Yep, absolutely. I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? All right. That takes care of all of our new business.
I have one more to add in there, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind.
Uh, can we add one more new business? Okay. Everybody okay with it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I really appreciate that. What I'd like to do, we had the YMCA come over to talk about their, their second grade swim program. I think that's a phenomenal program for our community. It's going to save lives. We have about 125 second graders in Bolden Green Elementary. So we have a vested interest in that program. What I would like to see the community here do, our town council do, is to donate $500 directly to the YMCA second grade swim program specifically. They're, they've got about a $6,000 or $7,000 budget to take care of that for a year. I think that as a community organization, show support for our kids in our community as well across the county, that I would, I would make a motion that we donate $500 to that particular program.
One second. Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. McDermott to donate $500 to the second grade swim program. We had a second of Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving along to council committee reports. We'll start at this end.
Well, Billy went over just about everything that we had in the county. We had a really good report from the DEQ this year with no major fines or problems over there.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Budget ordinance and policy committee, we met, Mark and I and Reese and, I don't know, I think we covered a lot of it tonight, didn't we, Mark?
Yeah. We went over a presentation of it tonight, too, so.
I'm going to pass to Lynn.
Yeah, we had a very productive EDA meeting. We had discussions with the cardinal group. And as you also let about earlier, there's a schedule layoff to start that process to help them evaluate where the town is, where we might want to go with some ideas and bring them together. They've got a lot of years of experience behind them in doing this, developing in smaller towns like ours. Not going to cost us a lot to do that, just some travel and overnight and some travel expenses. So we're looking forward to that. We're also continuing to verify the numbers from A.T. Hill for an expansion project over on the development area that we have there. So we're looking forward to clarifying that in the next quarter.
Planning commission did not meet. Global meeting, local meetings.
Couple of things I have, we, I've noticed that we've, there's been a lot of chatter in town about the state of our post office. I contacted a gentleman from Congressman Whitman's office to find out what process we needed to follow. We were about to need to submit a letter for an investigation. We submitted that letter to his office. That was approximately a week ago. We will follow up next week if we have heard that, any response. And when we do follow up, we will also add in the part about the parking lot. There's concerns also. We're, we're working through the proper channels to address some of the issues at the post office. It's not a, a shot or, it's not saying that we don't enjoy the employees of the post office, but some of their operations lately haven't been up to the standard of the U.S. Postal Service. So we've done that. Also at your desk, you will see a letter from a gentleman, Mr. Arthur Hooly, with his interest in joining the planning commission. He's a local resident and he's been in the fire department, as you can see, he works at RDC. His father, Mike Hooly, served for many years on the planning commission. And I asked him about it several times and he's finally actually took initiative and wrote a letter. So I'd like to, for y'all to review his letter and then at the next meeting, we'll, we'll move forward and act like we have two vacancies currently. One thing I did ask him, if he would be willing to take the commissioner's class, and he said he would, so that's a step in the right direction there, too.
How much is the loan?
Yes, he lives.
But it's not.
No, he actually owns the house of father he did, kind of behind, behind Dr. Wood.
Gotcha.
We have several EDA, people have submitted letters for potential to the EDA.
I haven't seen those. They wouldn't come to any where they go to John C.
Yeah, no, we just, we've had three people show interest on the EDA and we'll take those to the EDA for their review and then they'll come to council for our appointment. We have two open spots for the EDA also.
Yes, Tyler resigned this week. I said scheduled to permit him to continue.
Okay. Informational items. April 15th? No. What day was the Local Heroes?
13th.
13th. April 13th here at Town Hall. We're all invited to a Local Heroes banquet. If you have any questions, see Tracy. And next and last is the proposed budget and PowerPoint presentation. We will, this, I'll, I'll preface this with, it's going to be short and sweet this time?
That's right. Because you're going to get.
This is very high level.
The 21st.
And then 21st is when we get down in the weeds. So for the sake of time, everybody understand this is high level. The work session is, we will.
It's, it's mostly pictures and then a few numbers at the end that I'll just read right through because each of you should have in front of you now in the presentation, with the, the budget. And again, the 21st is when the work begins and then the real formal budget presentation will be when we have our public hearing.
Seven.
Seven o'clock.
Is, is it a little off focus, isn't it? Is it the top button? It's right there.
Is that better?
Just to review, last year, we decided that we were going to categorize, create cost centers so we could keep that, better track of what expenditures being taken place. This was following up with the guidance from USDA on creating separate water and sewer enterprises. We set up the event fund as its own separate fund and of course, the EDA has theirs. So the main issue I wanted to go through this year with you is just, I'm not going to be proposing any tax increases, but water rates, a 10%. Not proposing to increase the sewer or trash. I have to check because it is a contract renewal year, a rollover year. The 10% increase in water, ultimately, it, it's way below, the state average, way below the percentages we need to get grants. We also got the search grant, as you've seen in my manager's report, which will give us a blueprint on what we have to do with our distribution system. We just completed doing the inventory of all the water meters we entered into a database so we can do an analysis of what we've got there and what we need to replace in that, in that system. And then, as you know, next year, we'll come in with a comprehensive capital improvement program, also with a proposed rate schedule to try to implement that, working with Andy Crocker from SEERCAP. I'm also proposing in this budget that we take the information that was provided by the county on what, what the competitive salaries were in the area, particularly in the area of water and sewer, because once a person gets a license here, that license is good in any other jurisdictions around us, which with a car are just minutes away. Again, one of my missions here is to, before I leave, is to try to put together a group of licensed people that are going to be committed to the town, that want to stay with the town, and we want to create a work environment. That's why we created the, the job descriptions, the professional steps. We're going to fill the void in putting a training position in the, the water and sewer system as well as the water, instead of just hiring them, saying you got to get the license within a certain time period. So these pay scales reflect that. We did join the county health program this year. Of course, we don't fund it at the same level that the county does. They, they assist both employee premiums as well as family. We just do employee. But that'll be a first step in, I believe, in the right direction. For those that are, and I work with the budget personnel committee, they go over those studies and will provide those studies to the, the county provided it to us, to the, the whole council if so desired. And so that's going to be reflected in increased personal services budget. Most of the salary adjustments will be used to move people to the minimum of those new positions at the levels that they're currently at. Those that are already in the pay range of what we say that position's worth, the, the county study will get a 2% raise. Also talking about the creation of a new economic development position to bring Joe Alsah on board. I will tell you, she has been doing a tremendous amount of gratis work, particularly for the EDA in organizing, getting the opportunity zone folks from the state down here, working on laying the groundwork on grant proposals with the, the state, as well as coordinating this cardinal work, which is not in her contract, and, and she does that. And I think, just looking at her report, you can see how much time she's doing. I think it's a valuable position. The meeting we had with the EDA was, I thought was, it was well attended by business people, by the community. There was, I thought, a lot of excitement at that meeting, that, that, you know, that there's actors that want to do things in this town. There are tools that, that are basically, I believe, opportunities, once in a lifetime opportunity to help you leverage capital and make the investments in this community, plus the economy and just the natural growth of, of the corridor here. The time's right for something to happen. And I think the, the time's right for that position to be full-time for the town. What?
The money you collect.
Oh, okay. It's the, this budget, one of the things, it's, it's hard for me, you know, we're trying to get a, I'm trying to get a good handle on what, what's a good level of working capital for you in reserves and what, what you can expect in a normal budget cycle between what you project in revenues and what you project in, in expenses. Because generally, you have some money left over. You tend to be conservative on, on your revenues. And the expenses in a normal year, you don't spend your whole budget. It just, that's just because you know you can't exceed it and you tend to have it over. But we've had so many catch-up things that we, we keep going, well, we need more to get these things done, and then we carry things over, such as the, the lift station control panels, you know, we couldn't get that done within the budget last year, so it kicked in as an extra cost on this year's budget. And I just wanted to, to show you that you've made tremendous investments over the, the course of the last two years. And I'm just going to take you through some of the pictures. It's not all the things you've done, but these are investments in your community that I think are going to pay dividends in, in the long run. Is, you know, just before I came here, they went down there and they repaired the oxidation ditch mixers you had gotten a violation from DEQ. They're, they're going out. They, they just went out again. And, and part of the problem is, is, they really should have been replaced. So right now, we're replacing it with, with a, a new unit that's going to be installed properly. Part of the problem was when we went in there and saw the repairs, that there were some broken parts that were left in there that caused the, the bearings to go out again in less than a year, 18 months. But we're going to get that fixed. Right when I came here, again, part of your DEQ consent agreement was to put in the bar stream coming into the plant to, to, to get out solids and then a sand filter, which you can't really see there, but those are deep pits, a series of three of them that you need to filter your water through that, that had reached the end of the use of life. you need to filter your water through, that, that had reached the end of the use of life. Those two items alone cost you over two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. It's not cheap when you're working down on that.
You wanna include the fire system?
Uh, no. Uh, you know, and we went through these, these, these electrical boxes, and, you know, the, the warning signals weren't working on them, they, they were, let me see. Now, now they're, they're replaced with stainless steel, reinforced, anchored. They've got the, the warning lights on them. We've also put a citizen button there that once it's, once it's been notified, that the siren that goes off to drive the neighbors done, that they can push the button, and it'll just be the red flashing light, and just, just stayed our wiring on it, warnings and testing for our employees where they no longer have to open up that box and do things again. Not cheap. As we've seen, you know, the vehicles have used, reached into their useful life. Now, we did, between the Police Department and Public Works, we did secure seventy-five thousand dollars' worth of grant money, but you had to pay the rest out of your, basically your general fund budgets. Again, a lot of the facilities down there, this one DEQ, we, we were just, we hadn't got the grating done yet, but that was one of the things they, they were talking about, you need to do something about your drying vents, you know, the, the gutters had come it off, and you were getting the belly washing out there. I just gave you one picture of the, the, the finished product with the gutters all the way around the building. You have that, but at other, Billy gave me more pictures, they, you know, they put in drains down to the, piping down into the splashboards that ultimately spread the water out before it goes down into the. We had, we had just stuff all over down there, some of it useful, most of it not. We've taken away most, most of the, the junk. We were able to surplus some of the metal. We still have some metal down there, some, we, but we were trying to see if we could use some of the, the manhole rings and things like that with the current project, but they said they, they really wouldn't work, and that we'd best be, and that, trying to sell to most contractors. Now, they told us that we'd be much better off just taking it down to the salvage yard, so that'll be the, the license plant. But now we store equipment properly down there. I wish I had it before there, but materials, just all plastic PVC pipe and all sorts of things stacked on top of those buildings, all gone. You can't see that, but, but Alicia's a very good artist, so you've got a mural of pine, palm trees down there and what have you. It's very, very steady, but the plant is looking professional down there. It, it's been cleaned up, it's, it's, it's running, and we're still, still got a few things we need to fix down there. Again, as you're aware, we had like seven or eight non-functioning fire hydrants. Again, they aren't the cheapest things in the world to replace. Well, we've got all, we've got all our water fire hydrants working now, so. And you know you're spending a couple million bucks to replace your sewer lines, while you got a bunch of grant, you, you, a lot of extra money, too. So, and you can see, this building, I, you know, we did the, the floors, we put the heaters in, we put new crash doors in, we put a new roof in, you, you can't see it, but we did install since the last meeting new windows in, in the, the main hall, so now they're airtight, thermal. It's gonna save you a lot of money on heating and cooling, and they look, look much better. A couple of them, when you went to open, these don't open, but when you went to open the old ones, they would, they would fall out because the, the windows weren't square. And again, we, you know, we've done all the windows in the buildings over the last two years, as well as the front office. And again, the speed machines that get, get tons of compliment. I mean, people over in Essex that come through, through Bowling Green, they, they always notice your, your, your warning lights there, and they mention it to me. On the numbers, I'll just, I'll just let you, you go through it. There is gonna be too much of a major change. One of the things that I'm trying to do in this, this budget is start in, in, you know, back up a little bit, with our accountants, we're finally getting there. I, I, I'm not gonna go through the lithium issues we had there. One of the pieces of information that you'll see in your budget packet that you haven't seen in the past, is I'm gonna start to give you fund balances. You just see revenues and expenditures during the current year. You have no idea of what, what your balances are in each fund. For example, some of you didn't know that the EDA had fifty-thousand, fifty-two thousand dollars in their fund balance. You don't know how, what's exactly kept in your water fund. The events fund had, had accrued, not a big positive balance, but I think it was like seventy-eight thousand dollars' worth of additional revenues over expenses that were that dedicated fund. So you're gonna start getting all the fund balances. And why that's important, too, you're gonna see that your general fund, unassigned fund balance has gone down substantially from the past. That in and of itself is not, not the issue, why it has, because of actual expenditures, but once you divide that money up between different funds, like your, your general fund, unassigned fund balance will be a couple hundred thousand dollars. You might think that's, oh, that's scary. It's, it's closer to five hundred thousand dollars that we carry as working capital, by time you include the fund balance in the water and sewer funds particularly. Melissa will give us the numbers at the workshop. That's why big gauge is, is, we want to keep enough working capital so we can have ninety, a hundred, twenty days if we have problems. We don't get below five hundred thousand? It's around, you know, five hundred thousand dollars is, is the low point in, between revenues and expenditures going out. And as you know, if, if that becomes an issue, one of the first steps that I would recommend to increase your, your working capital would be to, you're on a two-month billing cycle for water and sewer, you can accelerate your revenues by going to the one month. So you'll see that as, as a new one. Now, one of the things you're gonna see in this is that there's gonna be a deficit projected in your budget. Doesn't mean that you're gonna spend down your, your funds on that. Again, when I was at Essex County, they, they had no working capital, they were borrowing their money each year, and through most of the years I was there, even though I had budgets that said that there might be a deficit, or they were totally balanced without using fund balance, I was able to build up the unassigned fund balances, again, because of what I talked about, generally speaking, I was able to, that you would underestimate revenues and have not spent all your money. Now, my experience says that that should be all right. Here again, what my personal problem is, I'm pretty sure we're almost caught up on, on catch-up, but until I get a totally normal year without a lot of catch-up in it, it's hard to see where, where you're gonna come out. My best professional judgment is, is you're, you're in the okay zone, and, and, and if there is a shortfall there, there's strategies we can come about to, to, to cover those issues. But pretty much, it's, uh, it's a steady budget, not, not talking expansion anywhere. Again, one of the issues is, is, again, Billy's crews working hard to catch up, catch up in that summer help that we talked about earlier, is definitely something that we can better utilize down there. And again, long-term wise, is, is, we've got to get all, we've gotta recruit people that will stay there and feel like they got a, a career with us, and, and we're, we're working towards that, and I think we'll get that. And I won't go through the numbers, I'll just let you look at that, because the twenty-first is, is when, and I will go to that next page. And there's your schedule. After the workshop, we go to April fourth for the formal presentation, then we'll go to a public hearing in May, and then we'll adopt and then pass the tax rates and sewer rates, water rates, whatever your rates are in June. Look forward to, to talking to you. You have details of, of each, each of the budgets in there. Just remember, these are, these are estimates, and, you know, it, it, some of the questions came up, we were working with Joey Sheville on, on sewer budget, because to set the rates, we have the right to recover full operating costs, so we're dealing operating costs, but their rate's gonna go up significantly. It's gonna go up from five eighty-eight to fourteen dollars. You know, he says, well, why do you have two line items on, on, on lab committees? Well, it's just a mistake from the past that they merged the two budgets, you know, when they reconstructed the budget, so there's gotta be a little bit of cleanup in that also. But if you have any questions before that hearing, I'd be glad to meet with people one-on-one and discuss those issues with you. That's it?
Well, thank you, and thank you to yourself and the Budget Committee for their hard work, and I look forward to a good constructive course session. Is there a motion? Is there a motion for a German?
I think we have a German there.
Okay, they have a motion, Mr. Gaines, is there a second?
I second it.
Second. Miss Gaines, is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.